Okay, so the time is 7:15 and I'm gonna call to get to order the next public hearing, which is an ordinance of the Borough of Westchester providing for the adoption of certain procedures related to the solicitation and award of public contracts within the Borough of Westchester, providing for certification requirements for public contractors, providing for certification requirements for subcontractors on public contracts, providing for public contract review procedures, repealing inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances containing savings clause and providing for an effective date. Mr. Estey, you wanna take over this one too? Or, yeah, please, please.
This is a little different than the prior hearing. This is what we call legislative hearing, and the purpose of this hearing is to disclose to the public the subject and nature of the proposed ordinance that's being considered for enactment by council and to receive any public comment there may be from interested individuals and parties on the ordinance. As the President indicated, he read the title of the ordinance, and that somewhat summarizes what the ordinance is about. I would only add that the ordinance proposes to establish requirements for the selection of responsible contractors for Borough public works contracts with a value of $250,000 or more. The ordinance would require contractor and subcontractor responsibility certifications, including the following: Contractors employees have participated in OSHA safety training course; the craft employees to be used are qualified and possess necessary skills; the employees will be paid prevailing wages under the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act or the Federal Davis Bacon Act; the firm submitting a bid participates in a qualified apprenticeship training programs for each separate trade to be employed in the project. The ordinance also establishes procedures for determining whether a contractor is a qualified responsible firm, and provides for the disqualification of unqualified contractors and for the awarding and execution of public works contracts. Once again, the hearing is being stenographically recorded, and therefore it's important that only one person speak at a time. Individuals wishing to make public comment should raise their hands, be recognized by council president, stand at the podium, and make their statement clearly and loudly enough. So at this time, I do have some exhibits to make part of the record. Exhibit one is proof of publication of notice of the hearing in the Daily Local News. Two is an email sending a copy of the ordinance to the Daily Local News and the Chester County Law Library. Three is a copy of a proposed resolution which council will also consider regarding procurement. And four is a copy of the proposed ordinance. At this time, it would be appropriate, Mr. President, to entertain any comments that council members may have about the ordinance, and then open the floor to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Estey. I'm just gonna state in the beginning of this that now it is 7:20. We also have a work session agenda as well. So I'm gonna give us about a half hour, and if we are stuck in comment, and we're here, we can't resolve this, I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue this till next month. But let's get started. I know normally we would have council ask comments, but I did extend a courtesy to Senator Carolyn Comida, who asked to speak, and I'm gonna allow her to speak first, and she is remote, she's in Harrisburg. So Senator Comida, if you are there and you're ready to comment, now would be appropriate time.
Hi. Hello, hello. Hi, friends. I am so delighted to be with you once again. Hello, Borough Council, Mayor, everyone who is in attendance. Bill Mann, I see your picture there, my good friend. I really appreciate being with you and your allowing me to share some thoughts on this ordinance. And I really appreciate Borough Council taking up this ordinance. I support it, and I encourage you to pass it, and I'd like to share my thoughts on the ordinance. The Responsible Contractor Ordinance is a matter of protecting our constituents and ourselves by ensuring that contractors and others engaged in public work can complete their jobs safely, efficiently, effectively, ethically, on time, and on budget. During my tenure as mayor, we attempted to pass an RCO before any other municipality in Chester County had done so. Since then, more municipalities have considered and have enacted RCOs. So today, I believe, is the right time for Westchester to join them. In addition, this ordinance addresses some concerns that were raised when the issue was first raised when I was mayor several years ago. For example, this ordinance establishes a $250,000 threshold to ensure that contracts with smaller local businesses stay in place. The RCO requirements would only impact larger construction jobs. And the ordinance before you widens and clarifies apprenticeship opportunities. Participation in apprenticeship programs is key because craft shortages are currently the construction industry's number-one problem. They fill a vital need by establishing basic competency in skilled trades through focused, intensive training. And they help ensure that contractors can meet workforce needs by providing a steady supply of skilled laborers. That means that jobs are done the right way the first time, preventing potential overruns and costly repairs. And as an educator and a former teacher, I love the apprenticeship program model. I think it's important, certainly, in the context of this ordinance. This ordinance sends a very important message to the public and to the business community. First, we have a responsibility to ensure that those who bid on public work are accountable to establish standards and qualifications, as well as our shared values. Second...
Senator, if you can hear, we lost your audio.
You did?
Yeah, you're back, you're back.
Oh, I wonder what happened. Okay. What shall I repeat? Did I tell you that I was a teacher and I really support the apprenticeship programs? Did you hear that?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Then I will just pick up, and sorry if I repeat, just a sentence or two. This ordinance sends an important message to the public and the business community. First, we have a responsibility to ensure that those who bid on public work are accountable to establish standards and qualifications, as well as our shared values. Second, it will protect Borough taxpayers and workers by ensuring that we only hire the most qualified contractors. And finally, it will help ensure that the contractors we partner with treat their employees with respect and fairness, including fair wages and benefits, proper safety measures, and opportunities for professional growth and career development. So, thank you so much again for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you tonight on the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. I consider this ordinance some unfinished business from the time when I was mayor, and I'm really delighted that you are considering it tonight. The time is right, I believe. The need is certainly there. So again, as I said, I support this ordinance, and I hope that the Borough Council will as well. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Senator Comida, and I appreciate you speaking tonight, and hope things are well in Harrisburg. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council, and Madam Mayor.
Okay, now we're gonna come back to comments from council and the mayor. Do we have any questions, comments?
I've never been lost for words. When we started this journey a few months ago, I was the person that talked to Mr. McGuinness about some of the wording and some of the way the documents were actually laid out. So brief history for those that are in the room. I am a tradesman from the Williamson Free School of Mechanical Trade, and I've spent 42 years in the trade. Went through the apprentice program, as well as the painting program at Williamson. The problem I had with the original ordinance was some of the language that was in the document. Mr. McGuinness and I were able to work through some of the verbiage, and as Senator Comida has mentioned, the opportunity to provide the residents of the borough with well-trained and qualified employees doing work for us is vital. I wish that more people would go into the trade. We're in desperate need, and we finally came to an agreement on the language. Mr. Estey made sure that everything was the way it was supposed to be, and as we move forward through tonight, hopefully council will be able to see the benefits and the rewards of the RCO.
Mr. Picara?
I have questions. I was in support of this when I first read it over, and then I reread it and reread it, and my hesitations, I talked to Senator Comida about it. I don't want anyone who is good at what they're doing currently to be pushed out and lose their position or their projects that are currently going on and possible future projects. I don't want to see this limit competition. I don't want to see the taxpayers be charged more simply because we've placed a bunch of hurdles in the way of contractors who are reaching out for work. Every time I've brought these up to various people that I've spoken to, I've been told these are not concerns that I should, that I need to have, that this is all going to be okay, that this is going to foster more diversity and more inclusive projects and better work. I agree that it's gonna end up with better work. But I just came from a meeting where I was talking to the supervisors of West Ocean, and they clearly carved out the water treatment facilities as not needing, not not needing this, that this would hinder future projects. And so I am just hesitant. I want to make sure that we are moving forward in the right way and fully aware of what we're doing. I also was asked if this was going to affect any public building projects and the way things were going to be approved and permitted. I don't think this has any bearing on any of that, but I want that to be clarified, if it can be.
I could answer that question about the water treatment. Actually, the water treatment has its own language, and so this would not affect it at all.
Not at all.
Not at all. The other thing, too, for people who don't know, I work at Vanguard professionally. My background is in economics. I've been there for 15 years. I have various security licensing, and I manage roughly about $2.8 billion with the market. Who the hell knows what it is right now? I don't know, right? But in a true free market setting, project owners choose any bidding procedure of absolute the lowest bids with fixed specifications to design, build, negotiate price, and time materials and procedures. However, nearly all governments accept the lowest bidder based on hard low bids. This type of public procurement puts downward pressure on contractors to reduce quality, cut wages, and avoid contributing to employee health plans, among other items. Reputation, past performance, workforce quality, and even final costs are not emphasized in the lowest bid model. As a result, the race to the bottom process tends to result in imperfect design plans, cost overruns, change orders, added safety risks, and low-quality infrastructure. Ladies and gentlemen, everyone here, for the most part, is a taxpayer in the Westchester area school district and is probably familiar with what happened within the last two months when the Westchester school district fired a contractor because, again, a race to the bottom, they don't have this ordinance, and therefore that contractor couldn't complete the work on East Ocean Elementary on time. They had every legitimate right to do that. As a result, that contractor took them to court, and it cost us as taxpayers $2.9 million. The same contractor, I believe, was down at Westchester University at the old McCarthy dorm, the women's dorm, which later became the Technology Center. Same thing happened. Added on nearly $10 million in change orders that affect every single one of us here, every single one of us. And I don't want to see that happen. Our neighbors in West Ocean were able to pass that, and I believe that this is not pro-construction or pro-whatever you want to say. It's pro-taxpayer because it protects every single one of us on larger construction jobs, to the point that Senator Comida made and to the other concerns that people had. Bids under $250,000 will not affect any person within the borough. In fact, the majority of our bids are under $250,000. So therefore, local mom-and-pop shops will be able to bid on these projects, and that's why I am for this Responsible Contractors ordinance.
I have a question, because one of the, when I first got ahold of this ordinance, it sounded really great, and I think a lot of the arguments that were made tonight, why we should adopt it, make a lot of sense. One of the biggest questions for me was looking at our past practices here in the borough and looking at those contracts that are above that threshold of $250,000 and seeing how this would have affected the way we do our business here in the last five years. So I did ask Mr. Metric to look up that, and I know he has some of that data for us, which would be great if you could share that for us, just in terms of the last five years, the contracts that we awarded that fit above that threshold. If we were to have this ordinance in place, would the lowest bidder have won or even been a qualifying?
So our research isn't complete, but we have looked back at the, and contacted the contractors that were over $250,000 dating back to 2017, which is a total of 14 projects. We contacted seven of the most recent ones, which covers nine projects that were let by Borough Council dating back to June of 2019. That covers everything from road resurfacing to public park improvements, to stormwater management projects, to municipal garage repairs, to wastewater treatment repairs, as well as traffic signal improvements. And again, stressing the fact that this research is not complete, the five persons who we did get in contact with, we had, excuse me, the four people we did get in contact with, one of them, Glasgow Incorporated, our paving partner, wouldn't have had a problem with, would have qualified with the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Miller Brothers, which is working on our traffic signal improvement as well, would not have had a problem complying. That is a $500,000-plus project. Unfortunately, two of our other partners who are currently working in the borough would have not, would have chosen not to bid, and that is our partner, Hudak Infrastructure, which is working on the Chestnut and Bicentennial Street Garage Repairs, which are nearing completion, and our partner that is basically a general contractor managing our wastewater system upgrade at Taylor Run. That is a $1.3 million project. They're a smaller shop, and they are working with subcontractors, pipe fitters, electricians, and so forth, to do a pretty complex project, and they said they would probably not have bid on it. So of the ones I have spoken to, again, small sample size, about half would have had no problem complying. In fact, already, we're doing apprenticeship programs and OSHA training and all those things that are in the ordinance, and half would not have applied.
Okay. Yeah, and I thought that was important to note. There is gonna be a cost to this. There's gonna be, those lowest bids for some of those contracts are gonna be, they're not gonna be able to bid on it. So the cost of the taxpayer will go up. That's just, if that's something that council is willing to take on, that's fine. If we decide that it's worth it for the liability that we're trying to avoid, then that is also fine. But I just needed to make sure I was doing my due diligence and asking those questions and being clear and making sure that council was clear on that as well. So, yes, Mr. Picara?
I just, this goes back, granted, this is a conversation I just left. So it was a brief conversation, but it was about West Ocean and how they left out the water treatment portion. And then one of the contractors that would not have bid worked on a water treatment. Does that not apply? Does that apply? I'm confused where those...
Sorry, if I may, I'm sorry. I thought I heard it stated that water utility contractors were exempted, but I don't, I'm not sure that's in the ordinance. I could be mistaken. I'm not sure. If it was intended to be in there, I'm not sure that it is.
Mr. Estey, I pretty much read this thing backwards and forward. I didn't see anything in there that spelled out wastewater at all. So...
All public works contracts with a value over $250,000.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
I do have an answer. I believe the West Ocean is part of a co-op. Therefore, they would, they would have their own. They would have their ability to have their own RCO.
I don't think I understand.
If we had a municipal authority, which we don't, then this would not apply to the municipal authority. But you have Borough-owned utilities. So the Borough-owned utilities, any contract for those utilities would need to comply with this ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, the municipal, sorry, is potable water and brown water.
Yeah.
So that, not to be confused with government, you know, municipal.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's good to clarify. Does that clarify it for you, Ms. Picara? Sort of?
There was a statement made about costs here. There's actually no additional costs. And this is a study. I could show it to you right now. There's no additional cost.
I don't know if I have time to read it right now, but...
But there's no additional cost, and I did also send that in an email prior to doing. So the only additional costs now are with materials, with construction materials due to inflation, inflationary pressures.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see this. I don't have time to read this 10-page study right now, but I feel like logically, if you take away the lowest bidder, I don't know how the cost won't go up for some of those jobs if those people aren't allowed to bid on those anymore. Think that, I don't know, right? I mean, so. All right, other comments from council or the mayor?
Yes, I have, I have two very, I have two concerns. Not even concerns, because I'd like to see us institute it. However, I guess my, being a part of the same conversation or kind of on the fringe of it that we were having with one of the supervisors at West Ocean, I thought she made a very good argument that perhaps we, as the council people, need to actually go to a trade school or go to a training center to actually see what kind of training is involved with going into responsible contracting. She said it was a very good experience that, you know, the school they went to, I believe, which was in Aston, you know, they work, they both work and go to school at the school, and then they work, I think, a couple of days a week at their trade. So I think, you know, we do want to make a good decision. I think it's important that maybe those who need to, and certainly, Bernie, you have, you know, you have alliances with the trade school, and I bet there's, you know, we can get a visit to another trade school if need be, just to make sure that we're on the right track. I believe we're on the right track, but we just need to, you know, make sure that everyone is on the same page. Secondly, I wonder, in any of this responsible contracting, where is the minority representation, and how do we assure that that happens? Because presently, I don't know, and I haven't seen that the borough has actually hired any minority contractors, and I wonder if this, if this would make that available impossible. Perhaps some of the language needs to include that as well at a percentage point. And then the other thing that the supervisor was saying was that the water, since they've only had it for a couple of months in West Ocean, two to three months, they specifically kept the water treatment plant out of the whole responsible contracting issue because they just really wanted to roll it out and make sure that it was going smoothly before they included that in it. And I'm not sure, you haven't said the last thing you said, Bernie, whether ours is in or out, but that's something perhaps we can look at. Thank you.
I find myself defending the RCO because I can defend trade schools and the apprenticeship program. If you wash away all the sand, what normally comes up at the end of this conversation is that you have 100% people that could participate in bidding in the state of Pennsylvania. Everybody has, in order to work for government, they have to be licensed by state of Pennsylvania, and they have to prove they have insurance, and they get a certificate and a number. The, when you wash away the sand, 20% of the businesses in the Commonwealth, right around 20%, is union-based. Now, union-based is primarily the forerunner and the stewardship of the apprenticeship program. To get in an apprenticeship program, every trade takes a different timeframe to do it. The painter trade, if I remember correctly, I remember I'm 70 years old now, so I do have some slight memory lapses, but I believe the painter trade was five years with the painters' trade. The electrician trade could be six to eight years. The plumbing and the pipe fitters could be right around that time. And what happens is the students pay to go to the apprenticeship program run by the various unions, and they work at the shop, the facility, the training center. And then they go out and they assist with the journey persons, the work in the field, so they can learn what to do. It's a long, arduous task, but at the end of the apprenticeship... It's a long, arduous task, but at the end of the apprenticeship program, not everyone passes. You know, some of them decide that they're, they don't want to be part of the, the union setting, and they go out and they become, you know, contractors on their own with the training from the union. Nikki Gada from the Painters Union was a good friend of mine during that time, and he was very, very specific to make sure that his trade was well represented. So to the mayor's point, you have Thaddeus Stevens out in Lancaster, and you have Williamson Trade School, well, actually Williamson College of Trades now in Middletown, which is down in Media. And of course, then you have the various trade programs that ABC out of Norristown runs if the, if they decide they want to do that. The apprenticeship program is the core. This whole RCO, because we want to make sure that the people coming and working in the borough know exactly what they're doing and how they're going to do it. The lowest bidder, as my wife would tell me, you get what you pay for. So, and I still shop at Kohl's. So, because I go through clothes like you wouldn't believe, splashing with paint. But the, to the mayor's point, the wastewater from West Ocean, that is a very specific trade, especially for the painters' trade, because of the coal tar epoxies, the regular epoxies that go in the clarifiers and all that stuff, plus the pipe fitters. You got to make sure that they know what they're doing, the steam fitters and that kind of thing. Not to say the fellow, the, the company that's doing our tertiary down at Taylor Run doesn't know what they're doing. I'm sure they're well qualified because they have to be inspected, you know, by the EPA. So, but, you know, I find myself now defending the, the RCO based on the apprenticeship program and the need for that, so.
Mr. McCoy, I haven't heard from you yet.
Thank you. So just as a follow-up to Mr. Metrick's research, I understand it's not complete, but I'm sure there are probably instances with low bid with companies that wouldn't necessarily qualify for, for this, that we've had problems that perhaps could have been resolved. I know it's hard to, to say in, in retrospect, but I think it's been said before, low bid isn't always the, the best course. Have we had problems with change orders or chutes or work, et cetera?
The Borough has experienced problems with contractors, some larger, some smaller. Many of them predate my tenure with the Borough. I've been here 18 months. In my time with the Borough, we've had reasonably good success. A little bit of a hiccup in one of the garages where we had some damage to our elevators that we, we, we settled that dispute without having to litigate or make any claims. And change orders have been kept to a relative minimum. I've been pretty happy with how things have gone the last 18 months, but I do know there have been problems in the past. There have been problems that, with structural work done at the Chestnut Street Garage. I know that was litigated. I know we can't talk about the settlement agreement that was reached, but that's part of my job too, is to manage contractors and make sure they stay on schedule, that the work is being inspected, and if we do have some transgressions or things that don't work out, that we get them resolved quickly.
And to your point, Borough Manager, I do have a letter here in, in front of me that was sent to me by Commissioner Mary Amoskowitz, and she said that, I won't read you the entire letter, but in a nutshell, she is for Responsible Contracting Ordinance, and apparently the county has it and has said responsible contracting policies help county governments reduce the risk of contract failure and ensure that contractors have a track record of providing employees with living wages and benefits. And it usually leads to better quality services and reduces the hidden costs like lawsuits that result when workers don't receive living wages and benefits. I just wanted to acknowledge her letter in case it's of interest to anyone else.
Ms. Ficaro, did you have, you had something you wanted to say, right?
I just want to clarify that the water treatment concern to me, the reason I was given for leaving the water treatment out of this was that they were not able to find reliable work that, from people who were qualified. There was, there was no one qualified. I have no idea if that applies to us, but that was the explanation that I was given, and I don't want to be stuck not having people working on our water treatment plants. That, that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, thanks. Ms. Dorsey, I know, I know you're virtual, and I feel like I, just, just because I don't see you, I don't know to ask you, but does it, do you want to add a comment to this at all?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, my question, I think, I think it was Mary D. Baptiste asked it, was, and was around the impact to minority contractors, so women-owned contracting businesses and my, minority-owned contracting. I know, Brian, we've had a conversation around that, but I don't know how many of those businesses would be eliminated by this $250,000 threshold. That's not clear to me. And I do appreciate the work that Mr. Metrick has put into the, the history or how this would have impacted the Borough directly, and the 50-50 split is, is interesting at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Brian.
I, I mean, I, Lisa, I don't have an answer as to, you know, who would be prohibited from bidding on those contracts over 250,000. I do know, and to Bernie's point, when he brought up unions, let's, for, say, for example, if a union does want to bid, you're going to be more likely to have women, minorities, and veterans be working on those proj, on those projects. That's the best answer that I could give you.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Allen?
And my, my two cents, because most of the dollar has been spent already in this conversation, is, to me, it's like a numbers game. What's our probability of hiring a contractor that's treating their employees fairly? I'd love to see that number go up to 100%. And what's the probability that we're getting highly qualified individuals doing all these projects? So to me, it's worth the price of admission.
Any other comments? All right, then I think it is time to move on to, to public comment. Just come on down, I guess, Mr. Braceley, yeah, you can come start.
Thanks. Don Braceley, 423 West Neal Street. I just have a couple of questions somewhat interrelated. First of all, in my, I was in healthcare, and every year we had peer and management review, and it was tough. If you didn't get real good at what you did real fast, you were gone. So this whole concept has a lot of requirements for the, the workers and the companies. Who monitors all that? I mean, who goes out and actually with the checklist and says, okay, you guys are doing this okay? I, I'm not being confrontational there, it's just, it's a question, who monitors it all? And just because someone went to a trade school doesn't mean that they're good at what they do. My son works at Shram as a welder, spent two years in school. They have rigorous tests that they have to go through, and in the two years he's been there, they've already, I think, gone through four welders, because they just didn't cut it, and they'd been welding for like 10 years. So it's like, who monitors it? And, you know, how do you qualify and quantify the quality of what you're getting? The prevailing wage is notwithstanding, I, I know how that works, but how do you know that your costs aren't going to be greater following responsible contractors' ordinance than if you didn't? I don't know the answer to that. The, let me see. Actually, I guess I spoke too quickly. Only one, one minute 36 seconds. So there, there's some of the concerns I have. I'm neutral on the subject, but who, who monitors it? And how do you know you're not wind up ultimately paying more than you would have otherwise? Thanks.
Thank you. You have something?
I'll briefly respond to you for a second. The, and I can only respond what I know. For example, if we hire a union contractor, the union contractor comes with a foreman, right, a shop steward, a safety instruct, a safety director, and, and a project manager. So as they work their way through the project, they have, they have weekly safety meetings or progress meetings to make sure it's going well, plus you have the general contractor is making sure that all the tradesmen are doing what they're supposed to do. So that's, that's your check and balance during a project. Will there be problems? Absolutely, because there's stuff that goes, especially new construction, unforeseen things that the architect or the engineer forgets to put on the plan, and they, and the, and the, the plumber comes to the, comes to the meeting and says, well, there's supposed to be 16 inches from the wall, and they're 22 inches, and where am I putting the pipe? So that's what those weekly meetings are, and what they're, what they're meeting, different things. And a cost of good labor, you, you pay a little bit more money for it because of the, the expertise, so.
Come on, come on down, yes, next.
I'm an IBW member. I did go through apprenticeship. The gentleman was asking, it's a four-year apprenticeship for us to go through, and I'm also have my electrician's license in the Borough. I got my electrician's license in the Borough because I wanted to see if our apprenticeship, because I was involved in our apprentice committee, was suitable for the licensing, and it, and it was. I also, we did the, you were asking about the bidding process and how it works for, I worked for a union contractor for all my life, and we did the, the West, Old Westchester Library on Lafayette Street, and that was a public bid, and we came in, bidding against anybody else, and we did that job. I was a foreman on that job because of my license. Job turned out good, so I hope that you support it. Like I said, and as far as minority concern, I guess you can see I'm a minority as well. So I, I wholly support it. Like I said, I see nothing but good things for the Borough if we do do this. It's, it's nice to be on a job where you know everybody around you is qualified to do their job. Having been in my life, I feel, so now, I've done jobs with both trades, but I've always felt more comfortable being around union trades. So I hope you consider.
Thank you. Hands up there if you want to.
Hi, my name's Kevin Brennan. I live at 715 South Bradford. I am in support of the ordinance. Don't want to just echo what everyone else has already said, but I'm a union carpenter, also went through the apprenticeship program, four years, and have great instructors. They teach safety, efficiency, equality, that's what we build, you know, everything on. And being on jobs, you know, union jobs or the like that are, you know, always safer, you're always around people that, everyone's been trained correctly, and the jobs always seem to get done on time and on budget, which is important. And that's really all I have to say, I'm in support of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, there was a, a question Councilwoman Lisa Dorsey asked about, and, and the mayor alluded to regarding minorities and apprenticeships, and you being a minority, as you stated. Could you allude to that and expand upon that, please?
Are mandated by the government, the IBW is anyway, most of the trades are, and we do actively recruit. I recruit myself, so it's, it's definitely there, but a lot of times with, with trades, it's, it's hard to get interest nowadays. So, but we do actively recruit, so yes, we do, and, and we do it adamantly. Like I said, I was apprentice director, well, training chairman on my local for a good 15 years, and I would make sure that every year that we always had, whether it be a female or minority of whatever, but we actively, actively pursue that, yes. And most of the trades do do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, this is Lisa Dorsey. Have you ever worked for a minority-owned contractor, minority-owned business?
Yes and no. I have, I have my own little thing on the side I do, so I guess that would be considered one. And I personally, you, we did, you, you were involved in the Westchester Community Center, right, Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the company I worked for, we volunteered actually, and I volunteered off my wages to do that job when you guys were renovating. We were downstairs and we put a firearm system in for you. Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess you could say we were in wrecked, a minority contractor doing that job for you.
Okay, because you, you were running that as independently as yourself?
Yeah, I was pissing you off on a regular basis.
I don't remember that, Mr. Scott. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Stefano?
Yeah.
And I could be wrong, maybe some of the people that are associated with the union that's visiting with us tonight will be able to help me. Working in Philadelphia, I remember a lot of the contracts in Philadelphia had to have a certain percentage of minority participation or ownership in the different contracts. For example, when I painted the Walt Women Bridge and the Ben Franklin Bridge, when I was with MAB Paint Company, the, the two contractors, I, I remember their name today because they were participating with the regular general contractor, and they were, they were not on the job site, but they were in the job trailers with us. I, I don't know whether we could put a, a percentage into our RCO, cover that or an amendment to it, or whether someone from the union could help out with the explanation on what Philadelphia actually does, because they're larger than, than we are.
Yeah, if there's anything to add or change to it, even if we couldn't add it tonight because it wasn't public, it wasn't published that way, we could do it, always revisit this, correct, to, to make amendments. The public comment? Okay, all right. That being said, I did say a half hour, but I'll let it a little bit longer, it's fine. Mr. Estey, anything else, any other comments that we need to ask for or anything? Okay.
Nothing else is needed. You gave an opportunity for public comment. Been properly advertised, and it, it's the will of the council to enact it this evening. It's teed up to do so.
I would like to make a motion that we pass the Responsible Contracting Ordinance as is.
Stayed one thing, and I mentioned this earlier. There's also an accompanying resolution that I'm sure you're familiar with. That resolution should be considered first and then the ordinance.
Want to amend that, then?
I would like to amend that and pass the accompanying resolution, make a motion to pass the accompanying resolution first.
I'll second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution. Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Ficaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next, we would need a motion to adopt the ordinance, correct?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the RCO, Responsible Contractor Ordinance for the Borough of Westchester.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Ficaro?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. That being said, we can close this hearing, correct? Okay, all right. Now...